Welcome, everyone. Please, would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Father, we ask that you guide us always, strengthen us as we make tough decisions tonight. We ask for guidance so that this meeting can be productive, help us to be effective and decisive. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, fizzle with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee's Summit Regular Session, number thirty-five. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields. Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Leppel.
Here.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lopez. Mayor Baird.
Here.
All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes seven-zero. There's seven of us here tonight. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember DeMaro.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Tuesday, during the discussion on the ALPR, there were many questions and comments that were shared by the city council, all well taken. During my questions, I mentioned my desire to offer a substitute bill rescinding the current ordinance. And due to the activity surrounding the discussion, the vote was called for and recorded before I could offer a substitute bill. On January, just for a little background, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, the Public Safety Advisory Board issued a letter supporting stationary ALPRs and the continued support of mobile ALPRs and rescinding the current ordinance. The use of these devices is very similar to police departments' use of firearms and body cams, and they are an essential tool used by the police department in investigations preventing crime and public safety. So at this time, I move to offer a substitute bill, twenty-three dash zero seven-one, striking Section Five while retaining Sections One, Two, Three, and Four.
Okay. I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to see that.
Here.
Mr. Dunn, can you help maybe, yeah, put on the overhead so we can look at what Councilmember DeMaro's saying? Because he's not striking the ordinance, he's just striking provisions of the ordinance? Is that correct? Is that correct, Councilmember DeMaro?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And I would...
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Head.
For purposes of moving forward with this, I would suggest that you treat this motion as though it had just been requested to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Let's do that.
And that you go ahead and vote on the remaining items of the consent agenda. And then when we, after, after the first reading items are read, then you take this item up and have a full discussion about this bill, and then you would have the full range of ability of the council to act on it.
Okay. Councilmember DeMaro, would you, or do I need a motion to pull this? Okay, I'm just going to pull this, pull this out, Ms. Fowler O'Curry, pull this out and place it after the first readings. So we'll take it up right after the first readings. And the one I'm saying pull is Agenda Item Two-C, which is the ordinance modifying the city council's acknowledgement of the use of the automated license plate reader. With that said, then we'll come back to Councilmember DeMaro when that happens. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda, which is just, that would just leave the action letter and the mayor appointments? Councilmember, okay. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes seven-zero. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Head. Council Roundtable. I'll start off by, I would usually save it for council comments, but I do think it does fit the criteria of Roundtable because it's community announcements and general interest. I went to Jefferson City today to testify regarding Senate Bill five ninety, which is also the same as House Bill nine oh nine, both of which are regarding a landfill on one fifty highway corridor and extending that amendment, that statute distance to one mile so that Lee Summit and Raymore would have a say in if, whether or not, or how a landfill would be put in place, proposed landfill on one fifty corridor inside of the Kansas City limits, even though it's right on our border. It was a very full senate hearing. They said that they don't, they rarely get senate hearings that are that well-attended with that many speakers. I did get to speak. Mayor Turnbull, Raymore and I got to speak first, well, after Representative Hafner and after Senator Bratton made their, they sponsored the bill, so they spoke first. And then us couple of mayors tag teamed it. I thought we did, I thought we did a good job. I've had some nice compliments. There were lots and lots of speakers. There were some great emotional stories, which always helps because I've got to stick to the facts for the most part as the mayor. And then there were others. There were like a firefighter that spoke, a mother, a parent, someone that had just made some heavy investments in Creekmore. There were Lee Summit citizens there. There was quite an array. There was even a Jackson Cuddy legislature person there that spoke. Yeah. And I had to drive back to make it to this meeting, so I did not get to watch the hearing and see what the developer had to say. But I will tell you that a lot of us, including myself, addressed the fact that the one, only thing that we've heard from the developer on this issue with regard to pushback on this legislation is that we're changing the game midstream, which there's no, my point in the meeting was, or my time that I spoke, is that there is no change in the game midstream because there's no application. So that's not relevant. As well, you know, we change rules and amendments and laws all the time. And what it means is sometimes the developer has to then work with the neighbors or might have to do more to keep everyone safe, public-wise, or quality of life, or whatever. So we do modify laws when we're looking out for citizens, is my point. So we'll see how it goes. I believe a vote may come out as early as Thursday. We'll see. I'll have either I or Mr. Head or somebody. We'll, our lobbyist, we have a lobbyist in Jefferson City that'll monitor this and keep us up to date. But it was, it was very interesting, to say the least. All right. Yeah, Councilmember Felker. Oh, Mia, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, the farmer's market opens this Saturday, so I'm excited about that. And the firefighters' award ceremony is this Saturday at Abundant Life at three o'clock. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring to citizens' attention, the Waters Utility Department is sending out a survey, which I believe we do annually, of fifteen hundred lucky residents. And I don't know if anyone here will get one, but we have a survey, too. We'll talk about that later. But just letting citizens know to look out for it and respond gives you an opportunity to give your feedback on the performance of our water utilities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Very good. Council Roundtable, we'll move on to public comments.
I've not received any public comments.
All right. Thank you. Then we will head right into proposed ordinances first reading. Councilmember Edson, would you please read Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-two?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading of Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-two, an ordinance accepting final plat entitled Woodland Glen, second plat lots thirty-four through sixty, and tracks A-two through D-two as a subdivision to the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-two, by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Leppel. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Thought I pushed that earlier. I just had one question, and I don't recall when this went through first reading. I think it was not, it was probably just after the election when I was elected, so I probably didn't know much then. But there's a comment here that it would be brought to second reading after infrastructure is constructed or security is provided. I was just curious, the security concept, I didn't know what that meant. I mean, I know where this is happening, and I can see there's been dirt moving and things happening, so I assume that means whatever it is has occurred, but I was just curious what that meant.
Excuse me. Josh Johnson, Director of Development Services. The security is for any outstanding items. In this case, I believe there's some vegetation to be done and then some cleanout of the detention basin.
So this, the fact that it's now before us means it's been taken care of, or there are now plans to address those issues? Is that what this?
There's plans to address those. Our common procedure is we hold plats between first and second reading. And so it wouldn't come back to you till everything was done, and we were going to have a plat ready for signature.
Got it. So this is first reading. We'll have a second reading. And so I think where I was confused a little bit is that the Planning Commission saw this nearly three years ago.
Yeah, and it's taken that long to construct and all that.
That's, that's just helping me understand what's happening. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
No problem.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any further discussion, so please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading. Thank you all. Councilmember Leppel, would you please read Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-three?
Thanks, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-three, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Lee Summit R-seven School District for the Meet Me in the Park event and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-three, by Councilmember Leppel, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it's unanimous, goes to second reading. Thank you. Councilmember Felker, would you please read Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-four?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to advance Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-four, an ordinance approving the extension of consulting services between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Biederman Redevelopment Ventures, BRV, for professional services related to the Downtown Market Plaza project and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same. Advance to second reading.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-four, by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. I wondered, just for a moment, if I could ask Mr. Elam to just talk briefly. We see these contracts come up for renewal, and I'm excited to see things happening with the Downtown Market Plaza project. And just, I always tell myself, okay, where are we at in this, and what are we renewing? And so I did correspond with Mr. Elam a little bit before our meeting tonight to just say, hey, would you mind just giving me an update on what the status of the different contracts are? And because we're, you know, renewing a decent amount, wanted to make sure things are continuing on, we're seeing the bigger picture, so.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager. So I've got a little bit of a diagram to help me explain a relatively complicated contracting structure that we've got going on with this project. Now, I say it's relatively complicated, it's relatively complicated from our perspective, but it's not unusual from a development standpoint to have several different contracts with several different consultants on several different pieces of a project in order to bring it to fruition. This doesn't look as great on the screen here, so I'm sure it's a little confusing. So I'm going to walk through this kind of on a high level, just so we all are understanding where we're at from a contractual standpoint, moving forward. So on the left-hand side here, we have the city, and then really we have three different kind of contract awards, if you will, that we've entered into for this project. We started very high-level at the top here with an original development structure agreement. That original development structure agreement was the document that laid out the foundation for our work with Lane Four and our work with BRV and through here. And it also laid out that it was contemplated that Lane Four would eventually transition to a development agreement, which they did here in September of two thousand twenty-two, to assist with bringing forward the public improvements associated with the project. In that development structure agreement, it was also contemplated that BRV would eventually transition to a management agreement. Now, you see I've got dates underneath a couple of these, these items here. In July, the development structure agreement, July of twenty-two, was amended to extend Lane Four's services out a little bit further. That box is grayed out now in this, and you can't really see it very well on this exhibit, I apologize. But it's grayed out because that, those services have been completed, and it's been transitioned into that full development agreement. However, BRV services are in need of being extended, hence the agreement before you tonight. We're not quite to the point yet where we've been able to have enough known to be able to develop the full management agreement. And that's really the heart of what this next step is today, is takes us the rest of the work that we need to do with BRV in order to prepare for a longer-term management agreement moving forward. So the rest of the contracting associated with this, again, we have this development agreement that's with Lane Four, and then we have these direct award contracts here. And now these are a number of different implementing contracts that we've entered into in order to move the project forward. So you have GLNV. GLNV is the architect on the project. And you can see there's a dashed line through here. That dashed line is intended to represent that there's a relationship with Lane Four and GLNV through the development agreement. However, the contract is with us, and we are the client directly with, with Lane Four here. And then just in March, we had the pre-construction services agreement with McCown Gordon. And then we've got a couple of other smaller contracts that were necessary for due diligence and items like that. This SES contract here from October of twenty-two was a contract that was entered into to assist with preparing the specifications for the environmental remediation that's going to be necessary across, across the street. The contract with Olson that's listed there, that's really a small contract, and that really was for surveying work, additional surveying work that was outside of the main agreement with GLNV. This, again, is where it gets a little bit more complicated, so I'm going to pop back up here. These other boxes listed as subs, there are several subconsultants that are contracted through this. For example, the GLNV contract, they have subcontracts with Olson Associates for the civil engineering. They have Collins Webb as a secondary architect. They have, blanking on the structural and the MEP right now because they haven't been that involved with the project at this point, and they're getting ready to be. But several consultants associated with that. Same thing with Lane Four, and eventually McCown Gordon will have a number of subs, subcontractors that'll be working on the project as well. And then two other agreements that we have down here, we have the Downtown CID Cooperative Agreement, and the date that we entered into that, that really is primarily a funding agreement. And then the Chapter three fifty-three Cooperative Agreement. So what I was attempting to do here was kind of take this complicated funding structure, or not funding structure, but contracting structure, and kind of show that we still have a number of contracts that are open, all moving towards further refinement of the project. From a project schedule perspective, we are on schedule to come back before the city council at the May ninth meeting with a discussion over the schematic design. And in the schematic design phase, the project is progressing. So that's going to be a really exciting night.
Thank you, Mr. Elam. I appreciate it, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. I could actually see the grayed out here. I can just barely see it, so it was all right. Yeah. Okay. We are on Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-four. Any further discussion on this agreement? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. And then that takes us back to the item that we moved from the consent agenda. This would be Bill number twenty-three dash zero seven-one. Mr. Head, Councilmember DeMaro earlier was wanting to provide a substitute bill, or do we amend this? What's, what's the best route to go here, based on what his intentions are? And I can't even remember what, what, you're not, those aren't cross-through, those are underlying. Which ones did you want, Mr. Councilmember DeMaro, which ones did you want to cross-through?
Just Section Five. That's the one that speaks to the ordinance. And I'll defer Mr. Head for...
Let me, let me ask you a couple of questions. Your, your desire is to do away with that previous ordinance completely and not have any restrictions. Well, what I would recommend, instead of attempting to amend this bill, let us bring back a clean bill that is just a straight-up repeal of the previous ordinance.
Okay.
If that's the council's desire, if the consensus of the council is yes to go forward and, and do that, it would be much cleaner to do that. Or if there were some portions of this that you did want to use, I would still want to repeal that previous ordinance so that you couldn't argue that you had two sort of competing ordinances in place.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer cleaning it up, repeal, just do away with it, yeah. But keeping Sections One, Two, Three, and Four, because that's the, that's the oversight and...
So you, you want to keep those first four sections?
Well, that, that, you know, that reads into the Public Safety Advisory Board with the citizens' oversight and everything. That's, that's the stuff that, that is probably important to keep in.
Well, Section Five is really only the enacting clause. That just says that this, this ordinance, this new ordinance becomes effective. So I guess I'm not understanding what we want to do here.
I, I want to rescind the ordinance. Where this, where ALPRs will not be under ordinance, be under the police department, much like body cams, firearms, things like that.
But you wanted to keep Sections One through Four.
Well, that's the, to me, the way I read it, it's, it's the oversight. Or the, you know, I, my intent is not to take away the, the oversight from the PSAB.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Head, first. Chief Forbes, can you clarify something for me? Because what I thought Councilmember DeMaro was going to do at the beginning, and now what he's doing are a little bit different. And so I'm just wondering, did the Public Safety Advisory Board still want oversight over, over where it says oversight of the technology?
Mayor and members of council, Travis Forbes, the police chief. The Public Safety Advisory Board recommended rescinding the ordinance completely. They still have, obviously they have authorization through our charter and with specific things that they can do, which includes they could ask questions about our license plate readers at any point in time. They don't necessarily need this ordinance to do so. But they, they didn't have a problem with just rescinding the ordinance completely per the letter that they authored, which I don't think was attached to the council agenda, but it was attached to the original CEDC agenda.
So with, with what you said, if you'd stay with me, Councilmember DeMaro, do you want to just, is it your intention to do what the Public Safety Board said, which is rescind the, the whole thing? Or are you wanting to try to amend this?
Well, given that information, to rescind the entire ordinance.
Okay.
Do away with the entire ordinance.
But you're saying that the Public Safety Advisory Board still has oversight, you still work with them, and they can ask any questions that they, that they want at any time?
Yes, sir. And they do, they ask questions about all sorts of equipment and policies that we have, including ALPR.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Mr. Head, I'm going to open it up for discussion, if that's appropriate, to see what the will of the council is.
And I would just advise, if it is the council's desire to move forward ultimately with what Councilmember DeMaro has requested, it would be appropriate to table this ordinance without a date. That way, it would just eventually die. And then I would also like if the council would give the staff direction as to, if you do want to repeal the original ordinance, give us, give us that direction. Or if you want us to come back with a revised ordinance, give us that direction.
Okay. Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yeah, I wasn't sure what Councilmember, which part of this Councilmember DeMaro wanted to rescind. But I do, when we discussed this in CEDC, Sections One through Four were really important to the members of that committee, having some sort of oversight. So I hope that they all chime in because I want to see if those, those discussion points come back. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think, you know, my inclination or sentiment is probably similar to what the committee was. I'm not on that committee. But I think what I heard from Chief Forbes, and perhaps, Chief Forbes, you can maybe say it again, but what I'm hearing is that the Public Safety Advisory Board, in its current role, even without this ordinance, does this. Is that a fair representation?
Yes, they could certainly ask for this, the information that they're provided at any point in time if they want to, and we'd be happy to provide it.
The difference, if I'm kind of looking at this, would be maybe a couple of things. One is this ordinance has an expiration date on how long you can hang on to data, thirty days.
Yes, sir.
There's a requirement for an annual report. That'd be another difference. And then, then the limitation on sharing it with third parties. There's some limitations here that, again, if we take this ordinance out, we might rely on the policies to do some of these things, but it wouldn't be subject to an ordinance. Is that, again, fair representation of where you're at?
Yes, sir. And I would comment that the report, it's really a lot of statistical data. I think, I don't want to, again, it's tricky. I don't want to speak for Public Safety Advisory Board, and we can certainly bring the chair in to do that. But I think they just kind of looked at the data and kind of wondered, you know, really what they're looking at and whether it's of value. We, we want to be cautious about, just for the same reason, so we don't necessarily want to talk about investigations or people's personal data. So we can't really talk to the Public Safety Advisory Board members about some of this confidential information, just like we wouldn't want to share the data with private entities or the public either. So it's really mostly statistical information. Some of the systems that we're looking at acquiring have that statistical information available to the public all the time through a public-facing interface on a website. We would kind of favor that type of approach, so that information's not just available one time per year, but is available at the touch of a fingertip. So, you know, I believe that the Public Safety Advisory Board just got to the point where it was somewhat repetitive to have these statistics kind of thrown at them, and, and they just kind of wondered, what is the value in getting these reports? If they have specific questions about LPR, that, that might be more helpful. You know, if they are wondering, are we sharing it with private vendors? And we can answer those questions. Those might be more generally helpful, if that makes sense.
So those, those are the other two parts of the ordinance that I'm looking at, is what's the, what's the policy now in terms of retaining the data? Is it a thirty-day?
Yes, this, our policy mirrors what is located in this, this ordinance. It's pretty standard for law enforcement to retain it for that period of time.
Meaning, you may not even want to retain it beyond that timeframe because of storage issues, or, I guess the only concern you would have is if some later request for data that could help with a criminal case that you've passed the thirty days, you didn't, there wasn't a reason to keep it. That would be the downside to deleting it, if you will, or letting it expire.
And I mentioned body cameras before, and which, some of that data is much more concerning to me. We show the insides of people's homes and all sorts of, of information in that data that we don't want released. But we can't keep that perpetually either. We just, we run out of space, and it's very costly to do so. So we have a system where if it's pertinent to a criminal case, we tag it and retain it, just like we would any other piece of evidence. We do the same with, with LPR. We get rid of the... We get rid of the useless images. And anything that would help in a criminal investigation that we would need for trial, we would retain, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. And then just this last part. Your policy obviously probably mirrors what the statute or the ordinance says, which is you don't disperse it to third parties, except in those limited circumstances. And I presume that you would likely, that's, is that a policy that's generally what's in place for most police departments, something like that?
Yes, I think in, that's where Mr. Head and the legal department, if they saw us sharing this type of data with private entities, I would assume they would have a big problem with it, and I would too. It doesn't make sense for the city to share this information with private businesses, from a legal perspective.
Thank you. Mayor, those are the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Thanks, Mayor. So if, if we rescinded this ordinance and there were change, this would still be in effect, section one through five in these requirements, correct? Or you're saying like, we rescind this and we don't, none of these things apply anymore?
If we rescinded the ordinance as a read today, the police department has these same provisions in their policies and procedures, so nothing would really change.
But if, but if something, let's say, someone wanted to make a change to that and change something about it, and we no longer have the ordinance, be within the Public Safety Advisory Board, or you guys to make any changes to that, it would never come before us or in front of the public to say what those changes, not that you would.
Right.
But if we wanted to say, hey, we're, we're going to, again, not that you would, if you wanted to make changes to it, we wouldn't have any oversight to that. You would have to come back before us and change it if, if they wanted to make changes. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, I think the conduit you would have is through the Public Safety Advisory Board. Again, they can ask questions at any point in time. I would equate it to like our use of force policy. Certainly, we can modify the provision, or our pursuit policy. We can modify the provisions of those at any time. Does it make sense for us to do so? Does our legal department suggest that we do some changes? No, they do not. And we also are accredited, so we have Kalia, which comes in every year and looks at our policies and procedures to make sure that we're following national standards. So we have a few different external provisions to kind of watch what we do, so to speak, to make sure we don't make foolish changes to our policies. But theoretically, yes, we could change it to, to do whatever we wanted to, but.
And again, not, not intimating that that's what you guys do. I just, my personal opinion on this is that I think it is important that the city, that we have a place that this comes before us and our citizens know kind of like what we're planning to do. And that if for some reason this was going to materially change, that it would just come back before us, that again, we get it out in the public, we let citizens know what we're taking care of. And I don't, I don't see the, I just think, I think it's good transparency. I think it's a good way to let the public know what information we're collecting, what we're doing with it. And, you know, there's some stipulations in there too about where, what we can do with that data, and I like that. And I just, I think it's good oversight, good transparency, and good for us to just have this as a, kind of a final touch point if anything's going to change. So I'd, I'd just assume it, stay in ordinance. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I heard you right. So you said we don't have something like this for the body cams?
No, this, well, no, we, we have no council or ordinances pertaining to our maintenance of body camera data or anything like that.
Okay, I guess in my opinion was just, if we don't have something for body cams, which like you said, shows a whole lot more and is a lot more invasive information, in my opinion, I don't see the reason to do it for this. Thank you for clarifying.
Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. I'm good with following the recommendation of the Public Safety Advisory Board. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask the exact question that Councilmember Hodges asked, which is, if we don't do it for body cameras, and if, if we're following what you called Kalia, a national standard, basically, a police accreditation standard for how we handle that, and we're in, and we're in line, and that's, Mr. Dunning, that's maybe what you were going to say is that we're, you want us in sync with, you want our police department in sync with best practices and accreditation standards and the policies that go along with. I'm assuming, Chief Forbes, you just, you, you take policies elsewhere and you incorporate them here, just like, you know, you, you change the wording and give it to, you know, do whatever you have to do legally to adopt those policies in-house?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, without, without getting into a long dissertation about what accreditation is, it essentially is using national recognized standards for police policy. When we had the George Floyd incident happen a couple summers back, our city was able to easily answer the public's question because we, questions because we use these national standards to inform our policies. And Kalia comes in every year and asks us for proof, not only that we have that policy, but that we're, that we're following that policy. So we have to send what's, what are called proofs. You know, Captain Lyles can say how difficult it is to do that, showing that we're following those policies to a T. And that's the beauty of Kalia, is it assures you as council members that we're running a professional police department and fire department and parks department, et cetera.
I do remember you being able to, literally at my fingertips after the George Floyd incident, send over the policy, those policies that we had, and we were able to post those on social media and such, so it was, it was good. Mr. Dunning, did you want to add something?
Yeah, just one, one topic I thought I'd add. You know, Chief Forbes mentioned the Public Safety Advisory Board still has purview over this if this ordinance or the previous ordinance were rescinded, since this one's kind of midstream right here. So PSAB is a recommending body, right? But this, this council or a future council could always bring this through CED, if this were rescinded, right? And these were only policies. Any future or current council could, could direct this to the CEDC and look at it again. That's just the way our processes work. So I did want to make that clear. It's not just PSAB that may have oversight of this. You as our, our board of directors, if you will, still maintain that ability as well.
Okay. Okay, I've, I know where Councilmember DeMora is, I know where Councilmember Pryor is, and I think I know where Councilmember Hodges is. Councilmember Felker and, I, I know where Councilmember Lovell is. What about Councilmember Felker and Edson? Are you, basically, we're at the point where, do you want to leave it as it is and keep moving forward? Or do you want, would you like to go ahead and table this and basically this, this, this ordinance would actually go, would go away, will expire? As, Councilmember Edson, sorry.
That's fine. I'm, I'm fine with tabling it indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
So technically, if we table it, it's still in place, though. I mean, this, this ordinance, so if we table it, we actually limit the police's ability to use stationary capture, right? So we actually don't want to table it, I think, based on our conversations.
Okay.
Because we still want to let them expand their use, but I think the concern is, right?
Do we have an ordinance or not?
If I can, I think, I think you want to take one of two directions. You either want to approve the ordinance that's in front of you, which would give some additional flexibility that doesn't exist now, or table that ordinance with direction to staff to bring back an ordinance that, where we would, where we would repeal ordinance number 7386 that was enacted in 2013. Those are our.
So two actions. I, I forgot to mention the second part of that action, if that makes sense. Councilmember Felker, you still have the floor?
I think, based on the, the questions that Chief Forbes answered, and I think Mr. Dunning's follow-up in terms of oversight, I am, I do like, I'm okay with that direction in terms of table it now and then initiate the process of an ordinance that would then repeal this, giving the flexibility back to the police department.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Pryor.
Would, does this prolong the timeline to start using those, or does that?
Councilmember, that's a great question. We, we're still in the exploratory stage of, if we were to expand, we're obviously waiting on the ordinances, but if we were to expand our license plate reader technology, it's, we're not close to flipping a switch or anything. We, we're okay with waiting a few months if we have to. Not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so consensus I'm seeing, sorry, Mr. Lovell, is that they are okay with getting, I can get a motion to table this and then with instruction for you to come back with a repeal. And then we can discuss this all over again. So somebody, Mr. Councilmember DeMora, since you started this big thing, you get to make a motion to table this indefinitely?
Yes. Mayor, I would move to table bill number 23-071 to a date uncertain, I assume, correct?
All right.
Yes.
And request staff to?
And, and request staff to bring back an ordinance repealing the ordinance, I don't know the number of it. Seven, 23, seven?
Seven, three, eight, six.
Seven, three, eight, six.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion on the floor to table this bill indefinitely and request staff to bring back a repeal of ordinance 7386. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember DeMora, a second from Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Seeing none, please. Oh, yes, Councilmember Lovell.
So I, again, you guys can do whatever you want. I just feel like this lays out clearly what they're, what they're able to do. We're not restricting them with anything, but it does put some parameters on it. And so I just, again, it's, I don't see the negative of having this. Like, this is what they've requested, and this is like, and it's just an ordinance, and I'm a council member, I can't speak for Councilmember Shields, but we talked about this, and the idea that it's an ordinance, here's what you can do with it. It's in tune with what they want to do with it. And it just means if anything changes with this, it comes back before us. So I, I don't, I don't understand of, of why we would just, or why we're getting rid of it. But anyway, I've said my piece. You guys can vote however you want. Thanks.
Well, when he says it that way, man, I feel bad. I mean, I'm voting against him, and it's like, jeez. I just also want to show, I want to be consistent with the way we do other things, I guess, is what I'm thinking. Councilmember Felker.
That's more or less what I was going to say. I mean, I, I think I agree in principle, I think, with what Councilmember Lovell's saying. But it just, as we dialogued about this, and Councilmember Hodges' observation, or at least line of questioning about body cameras, and do we subject him to a similar ordinance, struck, you know, similar restrictions by way of ordinance, and it sounds like we do not. So if we wanted to go that direction, then we've got to, it seems like we're then going to be in a micromanaging role. And I don't know that that's what we want to do, and that's, my guess is why we have a Public Safety Advisory Board. That would be my, my viewpoint, is that's where hopefully we have that citizen input to be able to say to the police department, we have concerns, and this is what we want to bring up. And then they come back to us as well. So again, I, I think the sentiment of keeping this kind of structures in place sounds like it's the practice of the, not only our police department, but the broader policing community. And I think I would be willing to defer in the future in that regard, knowing that it could come back to us if we need to do further action.
Yep, thank you. Public Safety Advisory Board, plus the accreditation, which is what we're always, you know. Councilmember DeMora.
Thank you, Mayor, and that's exactly what I was going to say, that
Oh, sorry.
Kalia is the actual oversight. I mean, we have to, the police department has to meet certain standards of their, and, and explain their procedures, actually, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to rip the Band-Aid off and call for a vote here. This is just too hard. So please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And, oh, I'm so shocked, it's six to one. All right, let's, let's do battle on this again when they bring back the repeal. I bet you will. You're going to be really ready next time. Okay. Committee reports. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. CEDC meets tomorrow, 5 o'clock here. Thank you.
They're the ones that caused all this problem.
Yes, that's because staff, when they don't know what to do with stuff, they send it to CEDC.
Okay.
I'm convinced.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works Committee met yesterday and did a lot of things, actually. Just FYI, one of the ordinances that'll come our way is relating to Colburn, the Colburn Road Project. It was a big, it's a big deal.
It is a big one, yeah.
Twenty, 25-plus million.
We've been waiting on that one.
Yeah. But other than that, other one, just wanted to bring everyone's attention that the public comment period for the capital improvement plan, I believe, is open now. And so I might ask Mr. Park to just say, send us an email, if you don't mind, to tell us where it's at in our inboxes, and we can push it out. If you, would, would, that would be welcomed. But invite your constituents to comment on what capital improvements matter. And, you know, that's big projects typically, and as quite often, if a comment's coming in now, I think I can represent this accurately. Usually, if there's a surge or a desire for something that's not in the hopper to happen right away, it's probably not going to happen right away, but it gets it pushed up the line to where if we can then program for it in future years, knowing that it's a constituent concern, and then be able to put money in place to be able to do that. So just encourage you to reach out to your, your constituents to make that known. That was part of what we talked about in Public Works yesterday.
Well, I have a, I have a whole new set of priorities, because I moved from downtown to the west side, so all my priorities have changed now. That was a joke for everyone. That was sarc, that was being silly, okay? My priorities have not changed. It's what the citizens want, okay?
Mayor, I, I will, I'm sorry, I'm going to give one more comment.
Yes, please.
Since I'm on the Water Utilities Advisory Board, which also met today, talking about revising its strategic plan. Everyone should have in their inboxes, meaning all council members should have a form, survey, excuse me, to fill out. So please take some time to look at that, review it, give your feedback. Obviously, reach out to staff, or you're welcome to ask me to, but reach out to staff if you have questions. But just encourage all council members to give that some time. We're going to have, I don't know the date, but the, it's going to be, I think, May, when we, when that is brought forward to us in this meeting. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to council comments. And could I, I'm going to piggyback off of that, Mr. Head. It's okay if I say at this point, thank you to the voters for the, the no-tax increase bond results. Seventy percent on a couple of them, seventy-one or two percent on a couple of them. And it talks, it speaks right to what Councilmember Felker was just talking about, which I'm excited because we're going to fix some roads, and we're going to fix some sidewalks, and we're going to address a lot of public safety issues, and we're going to, I don't know, I hate to, one way to say it is, we need, we need that plan at this point. We need, we need that long-term plan so we can point to each street. And when citizens say, when are you going to fix, you know, X, a certain road? I'm looking forward to being able to be more concrete. I know that timelines can change, and sometimes emergencies happen, and you have to prioritize things based on something that's, that's been, you know, that's under great duress. But I, I am appreciative that the citizens have shown that trust for us to put that plan together. It's a long-term plan, and we're going to be able to start talking about all these streets that Councilmember Felker was just, was just speaking to, so. And they also approved the marijuana tax on top of, so we're going to bring in a little bit more revenue there too. So we just, we obviously probably did the right thing by putting those things in front of the voters, so. Does anybody else want to make council comment or make a comment about that? Councilmember Edson.
Yeah, in our discussion at Public Works, it was amazing to see the list of previously unfunded projects that we had on our list that because the voters approved the bond issues, that will now be funded. And it was really amazing to see how much that cut out of our, our list. So that was great.
Now everybody, now everybody's going to want to be on the Public Works Committee. Yeah? Get to plan on spending money. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the voters, and it was, we had more people show up for that election than we'd had the previous year in April. So it's slowly, slowly more people are showing up to the municipal elections.
Oh, you probably mean in a, in a non-council election year? Yes?
Maybe?
Oh, no, now you got us all curious. We're all going to go jump on the Jackson County Election Board and see, check your, your stats there, but.
Well, then maybe the. Well, then maybe the November election.
Maybe so.
More people than the November election, yeah.
Okay. I, I know that people are often disappointed about the percentage of people that vote in all of our elections, but at least some of its numbers are typically pretty high compared to other communities, so relatively speaking, we're, we're in a, we're a very engaged community, and, and I'm proud of that. So, thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Edson talking about that. It was, so we were going through the capital improvement plan, which is related to that, the public comment period that we just talked about, and yes, you just kind of had lines through those things, or underlines, I can't remember how we characterized it, but, so I just wanted to say thanks, yes, to the voters, but also thanks to staff, because you all, a lot, put all, really, all the work together to bring it to us, and then we hashed it out, beat it around, and finally put it together to get out. So thank you, staff, for all your efforts in, in getting that, and now we get to kind of do it, put it forward. And I'll say, Public Works Committee, we talked about a new rule. We make rules in Public Works Committee, because I'm also the Rules Committee Chairman, but, and the rule was, depending on the dollar amount of the, the matter in front of you is indicative of how much time you have to speak about it, if you're presenting. So, we had a $26 million project yesterday, that was actually the shortest of all of our presentations. So, anyway, I thought that might be a rule we could entertain in council.
Oh, no, I'm not limiting anybody's discussion. I'm not limiting anyone's discussion.
Maybe just yours.
Because that is gonna get me in a lot of trouble. Would you, before you move on, would you do a plug for just, for Ministerial Alliance, Just Serve, and the, I think the first one is this weekend?
Yeah, the Clean Streets effort is April 15th, 22nd, 29th, and what, May 5th, I think we've got, so, 6th, did I get the date right? Yeah, so Saturdays, starting this Saturday, and go to justserve.org, and there's probably some other venues where you're gonna see people posting it online, but you can sign up for, you know, block, I think each time may be from 9:00 to 11:00, and I think each weekend may has a, kind of a different approach, a different focus for the cleanup efforts. So, you know, we, we often talk about trash here, we talk about a lot of stuff here, but we, and we're, we've been concerned about, you know, the challenges along our highways in particular, but this is a great way to really make a difference, and really get together with other people. I, to be honest, I'm looking forward to saying, taking my kids out and saying, let's go do this, and just having that kind of experience where they can do a little good outside of the everyday life they live, so, so that's what I have, Mayor.
That's, no, that's great. So I think it's at 9:00, but you can go online, justserve.org. And then I'm gonna send something to all the council members, just something you might be able to share, or something, but I'll get that out. Thank you. Councilmember DeMorrow.
Thank you, Mayor, and I also wanted to thank the voters to being so generous. I mean, it, it is important, we are doing great things in this city, and the, the passage of the no-tax increase bond just allows us to do more, and, and the, the citizens in the city will benefit from that. And on the, on the subject of how much we spent last night, it went from $1,900 to $26 million, so, so we probably broke the bank last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a plug for picking up trash. I was picking up trash a couple weekends ago, found 40 bucks, so, you know.
How nice. I was thinking about bringing my South Paw German Shepherd out and having her pick up litter, you know, record it, say that even the, even my, my dog's getting into the cleanup. My South Paw dog.
Your South Paw dog.
Seth, South Paw dog. All right. I'm gonna record a video for you, Councilmember Lovell, to prove this. Staff Roundtable?
Yeah, thank, thanks, Mayor. Have a few quick items to, to go through, noted on your agenda there, and within your packet is our, what we call our Popular Annual Financial Report. So every year, we do the annual comprehensive financial report, and, and think of this as more of a Cliff Notes version of that, but with a lot more visuals and graphs and things of that nature. So that is posted on our website. I think this is the third year we've, we've done this. The intent of this report is to increase awareness of our financial operations of the city. It's, it's brought through Govern, Government Finance Officers Association, and it kind of goes through our sources of funds, uses of funds, and overall trends within the community. So it's, it's a good, quick read, and it's on our website. If it's okay with you, Mayor, if I could ask Josh Johnson to come forward and introduce one of our new staff members?
He can after, after Ms. Wordleman says a word.
Oh, okay.
Come on, I gotta, she's, she's right there, ready to go.
Okay, let's get her up here.
Betty Wordleman, Finance Director. I was just wanting to be prepared, in case you all had any questions. The, the Popular Annual Financial Report is on the website, the link is in your packet materials, and I encourage you to go through and look at it, it's really a great summary. Cheryl Nash and her Creative Services crew put this together for us, along with Eric Stoyana from our finance staff, and lots of good summary detail information there, and we're hoping that it will help the citizens become more aware of the financial activities and, and overall activities of the city government.
Excellent, thank you. All right, Mr. Johnson's coming to tell us about what?
A new employee that you'll probably be seeing a lot more of in the coming days and months.
Excellent.
Hi, Josh Johnson, Director of Development Services. I want to introduce you to somebody who's gonna be taking my place with a lot of these public hearings, taking my old role on in development services. She's our new Deputy Director, Amy Nassif. This is the Patrick Mahomes of local planning here in the metro.
She looks like Patrick Mahomes in that red outfit.
Yeah. She comes to us from City of Alathan, before that, City of Chesterfield, and one thing I want to tell you about her, she's a Cardinals fan, and she's never seen It's a Wonderful Life. So with that, Amy, why don't you introduce yourself?
Man. Wow. Mm-hmm.
Good evening, Amy Nassif, Deputy Director of Development Services, I think still, hopefully, now, after that. I, I do plan on watching It's a Wonderful Life, it's on my calendar now for tomorrow, so I'm very excited about that.
Can I come over and watch with?
So we're gonna have a screening premiere of that, and I'm really excited to be here. Yes, Chiefs fan all the way, that's why I had to leave St. Louis, because I lost, I didn't have a football team anymore. I have gone to a Royals game and worn red, but it was, it was a wonderful time, and I liked this, I enjoyed the stadium. So, but I'm very excited to be here. I've been in public service for about 27 years, and been in planning for 20 years, actually, in June, so, thanks for having me.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
You gotta have a good wit to take Josh Johnson's place, though.
Hi.
You gotta bring your wit every game.
And my movie lines, so I, I have, yes. I'm up for the challenge, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Dunning?
Yep, just a few more reminder of recycle fact, fast, and drug take-back day, that'll be on April 22nd, that information's on the city's website as well. I'll echo comments about April 4th election, very thankful for the support and trust and confidence in the organization, I think that's a direct reflection of our leadership, each one of you, helping shape, shape that package, and extremely thankful for staff working in a comprehensive, multidisciplined approach to bring forward those packages in a very short timeframe in order to get that, that accomplished. So very thankful for all of those efforts. And then lastly, on April 19th, our Douglas Street improvements from, let's see, that'd be Chipman Road down to downtown to Second Street, there's gonna be, I'll call it an open house-type meeting between 5:30 and 7:30 here at City Hall to, to provide some opportunities to view the plans, interact with the engineers and our staff on, on that improvement project on Douglas Street, from Chipman to Second Street. And that is all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we have to, we have a closed session that we need to go into. Councilmember DeMorrow, would you please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Pursuant to section 610021 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to individually identifiable personal records, personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, I move for closed session.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to move into closed session by Councilmember DeMorrow, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeMorrow?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilmember Edson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Felker?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.